Okay, it is six oh eight and I'm gonna start the meeting in two minutes because I said I was gonna start it at six ten. And so if somebody walked away from their Zoom.
My computer says six ten.
It does?
Mine says six oh nine.
Mine's a six ten also.
One of mine says six oh nine and one says six oh eight.
Need to synchronize our clock.
Alright. Let me see if I can. And my phone and my computer say six oh eight, let's go ahead and do this. So it is six ten and we'll call the Tora, the Talent Urban Renewal Agency Regular Meeting of July seventeenth order roll call please.
Board member Coley here. Board member Pranemarov's not present. Board member Greider.
Here.
Board member Pesizov's not present. Board member Byers.
Here.
Board member Par- Perry Miller.
Here.
And Chair Ayersflood.
Here.
Chair, you have a corner.
Thank you Hector. The next item on the agenda is item number two, speakers heard on non-agenda items. Do we have any speaker request forms?
Mayor, we have not received any.
And do you have any in your email?
No, I I checked my email earlier and there were there were none and there is an audience member though.
Well, so the rule that we're following until we have an adopted rule is that if you have any up to this moment, if you'll just check your email real quick and see if you have.
I checked it a little earlier, yeah. There were no speaker request forms.
Earlier being when?
Right before we started here, I can check once more.
Yeah, let's just take a quick look.
A second please, I closed it.
Thank you Hector, I appreciate it, sorry about the hassle. And by that, I mean I don't mean to sound like I'm hassling you.
Mayor, I'm logging to my email and I do not see any additional speaker request forms.
Thank you Hector, so with that, we won't be taking any more, we won't take any bigger requests forms after this. So item number three is consent calendar. There is no consent calendar tonight. Item four is items from the Executive Director, four point one is the disposition of Tora owned property staff. Mayor, Councilor Perry Miller, our member Perry Miller.
Sorry, thank you, before staff report, just because this is such a huge item and report, I'm wondering if we can separate the Home Street conversation from the everything else conversation, just because of the tenants in Home Street and thinking about conflicts of interest that will need to be declared. I'm wondering if we can do that, because I'm also one, I'm also noticing that.
So I think we would do that at four point two at the adoption of resolution twenty twenty four, is that right?
Well, there's also potential decisions, I think, that could be made.
From four point one?
From four point one, is that right Gary? Sorry, it's a massive.
Plain Street property because of the tenant.
Yes. Yeah, I thought it was just a decision for four point two.
I thought it was two, but.
If there's a decision on four point one, we'll do the declarations now.
Potential motions.
Let's just do them now. So are there any conflicts of interest for either four point one or four point two? Four point one being disposition of Tora owned properties, four point two being adoptions of a resolution twenty twenty four dash zero three zero are establishing rental rates on Tora owned properties. Member Greider.
I do have an actual conflict of interest for possibly both agenda items. So I will recuse myself, I was planning on doing that for four point two, but it sounds like possibly four point one. I work for the Rogue Action Center, which currently rents space at Home Street.
Thank you, anybody else? Okay. Staff report.
Okay, no, four point one. The Talent Urban Renewal Agency owns four properties in addition to the Gateway Site. Those are, those include three remnant properties. I'm consolidating, consolidating those into one discussion. Remnant properties of varying size along the south side of Main Street. These properties are about twenty four feet deep and are considered remnants from the Main Street Improvement Project. Another property is a commercially zoned property occupied by a house currently leased to a nonprofit agency, Rogue Action Center, located at one oh two Home Street. The third parcel is located on Talent Avenue. It's a now vacant parcel that is proposed to be used in a transaction to acquire the adjoining parcel to the north for the purpose of facilitating the Wagner Street Extension. And the fourth piece is a remnant on the northeast side of Main Street, currently landscaped and maintained by the city. The Executive Director is conferred with Tora Legal Counsel Lori Cooper concerning the disposition of these properties. Essentially, the Tora can enter into development agreements with prospective private users of the properties and convey them to them at market value or at below market value or for no consideration, depending upon tourists finding of how the transaction would resolve in the property being developed or redeveloped consistent with the urban renewal plan. In all instances, a public hearing would be required. An appraisal should be done and obtained for any property conveyed to a private party so that all parties in the public are informed as to the value of the public property being conveyed. So first, I'm gonna talk about the remnant properties. This came to our attention and is before you this evening primarily because we've received a request in one of the adjacent property owners for the Tora to convey that twenty four feet to them so that they could proceed with their development plan for that site. The three remnant properties are shown on the map as parcels A through C. The current legal lot lines for these properties would need to be realigned so they could be attached to adjacent properties, all of which currently front on Valley View Road. According to former Tora Executive Director Marla Kates, all of these property remnants offered to the adjacent property owners when the Main Street construction was concluded in all decline. The property owner at tax lot fifteen hundred is requesting that Tora convey to him a franchise along Main Street adjacent to his property at no cost. According to the minutes of the Tora meeting of December nineteenth, twenty eighteen, the Tora Board directed staff to convey this land to the same property owner upon approval of an improved site plan and with a minimum of parking for each residential piece on that land. That property transaction was never completed. The same property owner has now submitted a different project for the site plan review. The new project is for a food cart park. There's no residential element of the new plan. Unlike the Foodie Project, which recently opened in Phoenix where all of the food carts are permanent structures, the food cart park proposed by the owner of TL fifteen hundred would primarily be populated with food trucks. TL fifteen hundred is zoned commercial central business district. Tora could convey the remnant to the owner at no or under value through a development agreement. According to Tora Legal Counsel, a public hearing would be required. Tora should also obtain an appraisal of the remnant to document the value of the property being conveyed. Tora could also lease the property, the remnant, to the adjacent property owners owner or enter into a license agreement for a particular use. Inasmuch as the proposed use involves primarily non-permanent structures, a license agreement may be the most appropriate approach. Another policy question is, is the proposed use consistent with the city's vision for the central business district and the urban renewal plan? This, this development would need to go through scenic or the corridor review for historic, the historic district and through a site plan review with the planning department, neither of which has been initiated at this point. While the proposed use may be permitted by the current zoning designation for the property, the proposed development is, is the proposed development consistent with the development vision for the central business district? And does the proposed use further the goals of the urban renewal plan? Urban renewal agencies utilize participation through a development agreement as an incentive to promote development that is consistent with the urban renewal plan. While the property owner's two thousand eighteen proposal for a residential or mixed use project may have been consistent with this goal, is a food cart park also consistent? Given that the proposed development involves minimal permanent improvements, the Tora may wish to consider leasing or licensing the property to the property owner under an agreement and the property would be conveyed if and when more substantial permanent improvements are made. Current tourist staff has had no contact with the other property owners, the two others, adjacent parcels. And it's noted again here that the parcels, the remnant parcels don't align with the adjacent parcels, so we did have a lot, some lot line adjustments there. Align those parcels from the conveyance of the property. The property owner at TL fifteen hundred is aware of that and is prepared to submit a lot line adjustment application for his project. The owner interested in obtaining parcel B has submitted a lot line adjustment application, which is what has prompted this consideration. Staff has contracted for an appraisal of all three parcels, we don't have that back yet. And we're looking for some guidance from you this evening about how to approach this request from the owner of tax lot fifteen hundred. So I'll discuss that in the potential motions section. The second property under discussion is one oh two Home Street. That property is currently leased to Rogue Action Center at a rate of a dollar a month. The lease extends through November twenty twenty four. A private property, a private party who had previously operated a cafe in the downtown area has expressed interest in purchasing the property for conversion to a small cafe. The property is currently being appraised and I actually received the appraisal today. The building consisting of four hundred eighty four square feet needs repair and maintenance of roof, rain gutters and floor. There is a reported boundary line dispute with the property owner at one oh four. Tora approved the lease agreement with Rogue Action Center in November twenty twenty two. The term of the year was for one year with an option to renew for an additional year. Rogue Action Center has indicated an interest in continuing the lease past November twenty twenty four and pay the newly adopted nonprofit rental rate. For our staff, we do, we have obtained the appraisal, the appraisal value is two hundred and ten thousand dollars. The evaluation of the condition of the building identifying needs to repair should be done before it is released. Tora could sell the property under a development agreement to the cafe owner who has expressed interest, this would require a public hearing. Tora could accept bids for the purchase of property. Tora could lease the property according to fair market value to a private party or at a subsidized or nominal rate to a nonprofit organization. And Tora could enter into a new lease agreement with Rogue Action Center at a nonprofit rate you've adopted. Or you could enter into a triple net lease agreement with the cafe operator. You can advertise and accept lease proposals from all interested parties or convey the property to the city. Staff recommends that upon expiration of the current lease, Tora convey ownership of the property to the city of talent and that the city retain ownership and lease the property for ongoing revenue generation. This would require a public hearing as well. On the Wagner Street Extension, the property is identified in the West Valley View Plan as property to be used as an exchange and purchase of property owned by Bonnie Morgan to facilitate the first segment of the extension of Wagner Street. This property and the property proposed for acquisition are currently being appraised and we have received the appraisals on those properties. One was appraised at one seventy five, I believe the other was appraised at two ten. Since my mind. And we're actively engaged in discussions with Bonnie Morgan on that potential exchange. And finally, there's this odd shaped remnant on the leftover from the development of the traffic circle. It's still a parcel. But does not appear that it is of sufficient size to be developed in some way. The parcel does not appear to be developable, is currently landscaped with pollinator garden and is maintained by the city and volunteers. Staff recommends that this parcel be conveyed to the city of talent as public street right of way and retained in its current use. That would also require a public hearing, all of these. So potential motions would be to authorize the Executive Director to initiate discussion with the property owner at tax lot fifteen hundred regarding a license agreement for the adjacent Tora remnant parcel. With any such license to be contingent upon city development approval of the site. So that's, that's the first topic that we would ask you to consider is what to do about this request for the conveyance of that remnant adjacent to lot fifteen. Our recommendation is that you not convey it and fee to the adjacent property owner as he's requested. But because of the proposed use, not being, not being predominantly permanent structures and being licensed to that property owner for his use in conjunction with his current development, but condition that license on that property owner receiving full development approval from the city.
That conditioned the what?
Conditioned on that property owner receiving development approval from the city for his project.
So they don't, in other words, they don't get the, the conveyance doesn't happen until there's an approval.
Right. That means that he would need to go through the site plan review through scenic corridor review, historic district review before we do the property transaction. He's proposing to do it in the reverse, to do the property transaction first. Our staff believes that we need to make sure that the proposed use is consistent with the city's plan.
Members? Any discussion? Member Coley?
Just to clarify, the staff recommendation for the remnant parcel is to lease it to the property owner or eventually convey it to them?
License it, license its use to the property, which is likened to a lease.
Is there any reason to do that rather than just convey it to them? In my mind, seems like eventually that property is going to be conveyed, those remnant parcels are going to be conveyed to those property owners. Is there any advantage to the city to have it be licensed instead?
The licensing recommendation is because the property owner is not proposing to install permanent improvements to the site. They could, they could install a food cart park and then withdraw that use and install a, a, another use that may not be consistent with what the, what the tourist's vision is for that, for that property. It, it, it's almost as though the, you know, many food cart parts of them, but many are not. So we'd be conveying it to the, to the property owner for his use without really knowing what the long term plans is.
I have some thoughts on it. I mean, I, I didn't, I wasn't in, in total support of the original conveyance. I, I, the purpose of urban renewal is to mitigate light and, and, and incentivize development in alignment with the, in alignment with the, the Valley View plan. And I didn't feel like we had enough detail or enough understanding of what the plan was to convey that land and I also believe that there were sites that there were, I mean, uses that might might be more along the lines of what the urban renewal district was trying to accomplish. So yeah, I I feel like it would be outside of the urban renewals purpose to convey land for the purpose of something that doesn't align with our urban renewal plan. And I feel like once you do that, you set a precedence for any of the other projects that we're working on where we have land. There's nothing wrong with conveying land, that's something that urban renewals do. I mean, the Foodery Project is a perfect example where that landowner who has developed those sites at three thousand dollars a piece, I think, got that land for one dollar. And so it is part of what urban renewals do is, is convey land. So I don't think that's outside the, the, the the, the intention, but I do think that unless they can demonstrate that they're gonna use the land, I would, I would even consider licensing it to them until the development is completed. So I, it would, in my mind, what, what should happen is that the permit should be pulled, I mean, and reviewed for, or the plan should be submitted and reviewed for compliance with the plan and, and then if it does comply with the plan, that the land would be conveyed when the, when the project was completed. That's, might be a step too far, but I, at minimum, unless there's a plan that shows that aligns with the urban renewal plan, I, I feel like we're we're not only not in alignment with our plan, but we're also setting a precedence for properties that we, that urban renewal owns all over the city. Those are just my thoughts. I love the idea of having a food truck cart, but place, but I'm just not sure if it's the role of urban renewal to provide land for that outside of the parameters of our own plans. Councilor Perry, our member Perry Miller?
So as far, I agree with the points that you're making. And I guess my question would be, so rather than rather than looking at the potential motion, rather than it being contingent upon city development approval, it would be further past that process. That would just be the first step.
I think that, that the council, the, I, my opinion is that the urban renewal agency should have to approve the plan because it gives us a chance to see if it's in accordance with the urban renewal plan. And once the plan is approved and then, and then they build it, it would be, you know, I mean, where the conveyance actually happens as long as it's in the process somewhere where we're assured that the project that we approved is the project that's getting built. But I do think that approval of the project needs to come before anything.
So they could provide a, really a better description of their plan, bring it to the Tora for review before they go do the site plan review with the city or after?
Well, I, like, they can, they can have a food cart park in that, on that property with or without urban renewal.
Right.
Because that, right, because that complies with our zoning.
Right.
But as far as like whether or not we use urban renewal resources for that, it would be, it should be, in my view, it should be contingent on whether or not their plan complies with the urban renewal plan.
Uh, member Byers, just a very tiny question, is that parcel accessible if it doesn't get that?
It would have, the access would be from the alley.
Got it.
And I haven't verified it, but it's my understanding that there are driveway access restrictions on Main Street. So there may not be a driveway available to them on Main Street.
And then I guess a follow-up question for all of us. How much effort would it take of for a staff to ensure that that remnant parcel was not encroached upon if it wasn't licensed?
I didn't hear the last one.
My follow-up question was how much effort from tourist staff would it require to make sure that that remnant parcel was not encroached upon if it was not licensed?
It would not be encroached upon.
Okay.
Code enforcement? Yeah, are you asking, I think I'm hearing her ask how difficult um, how difficult would it be moving forward to make sure that whatever development did happen? If the property wasn't conveyed, was not encroached upon, and I think that would just be, that's a meets and bounds kind of a thing, right? It has to be surveyed um, for the project and that sort of thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. The sur-, I think the surveyors are responsible for that, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then isn't there enforcement of those boundaries in one way or another, whether it's building a fence or, um, you know, all of that? I'm just wondering, you know, like if we're thinking about it from all, all angles, is it making more work?
Uh, I, I, I think that if, if you're going to consider more than uh, just the licensing agreement, that you should, just say, tell the applicant he needs to go through site plan. Uh, and, uh, if he gets through the site plan review and the, um, the, um, downtown, like the architectural review process, then come back and tell, this that'll better define the project, then come back and talk us about conveying the plot.
I guess what I would say, Gary, is that I feel like we're jumping over a proposal, like we don't have a proposal in front of us. We don't have a proposal that demonstrates for us how this project aligns with the urban renewal plan. And, and whoever it is that's doing his plans for him is, is getting off the hook on some level. That's, you know, that's what you hire your professional um, person to do is provide a proposal. And so I, I feel like for us to make decisions on this conveyance without a proposal before us is, is a little, a little challenging.
I, I agree with that. Uh, the, uh, the, in talking with the applicant, uh, two things, one is that, um, he, u- u- until we talked and even after we talked, uh, he, his feeling, his view was that to approve this back in twenty eighteen, why do we have to revisit it? And I told him it's a different project.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, and he wanted to try to get an answer on the conveyance before he did his site plan. So he could show how that property could be used within his site plan. He didn't, he didn't want to go ahead and do a site plan that included property that he, that he didn't know whether he was going to be able to use. So it's, it's a little bit of, uh,
I think when we ask him for a proposal, um, I mean, he can do a, uh, a conceptual plan if he wants to, but when we ask him for a proposal, that puts him in a position where he has to demonstrate for us how his plan aligns with the urban renewal plan.
Got it.
And I think that might inform some of the, um, that it might, it, it takes us out of the position of having to go through and tell him, telling anybody how their plan doesn't commit to our, to the urban renewal plan. I don't think we, we can or, or should um, approve anything that doesn't align with the plan. That's our charge in urban renewal. Um, so, but I do think it's a, uh, if they, if somebody is looking for a conveyance, it's upon them to demonstrate through a proposal how their proposed project aligns with our plans. And I feel like that's probably a pretty good exercise to do.
Good. Good.
And maybe that's the case for all of those pieces, including, well, I think the city gets conveyed of those pieces without, I mean, I think that's built into the plan. If I remember correctly, in the urban renewal plan, the city has conveyed all lands that are, yeah, it's already built into the plan.
Okay. All right. Like, I can get back to him with that direction. That seems to be a consensus.
Yeah, and I think it's important for the, I, I mean, I, I think, uh, personally speaking, I'm, I'm excited that there's a point, that there's activity being considered. Um, but, um, I, um, I think it's important for them to understand or, or maybe convey to them that the, um, the original approval isn't, um, isn't, shouldn't be or isn't, um, available to just any plan on that property. I, it sounds to me like you may have already had that discussion with him. Okay, all right, very good. I feel, um, confident about that.
Perfect. Next part of this was, uh, proposed a motion to provide notes to the other two property owners adjacent to the remnants that, uh, linked to some agreements with them that, uh, developing with them, should they choose to incorporate. We have had correspondence with them for many years, so, so uh, it's you know, we're here, we're interested in trying to assist them with the development of their property. That, and we start a conversation about what they're, if they have any plan.
Any comments or, uh, member Colay?
I, I think it would be a good idea to do that, um, just it being the entrance to town. And if the other property owner is considering development, it would help kind of move that along. So it seems pretty straightforward to me.
I think it's transparent as well.
Yep.
Uh, it might be a, an opportunity also to say that, uh, we'd be looking, if, if there's any, any interest, we'd be looking for proposals that demonstrate that what they're planning is in alignment with the urban renewal plan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll accept that as a consensus to move forward. Third one deals with one or two home street. Uh, and I've offered two alternative motions here. One is to initiate the process of conveying the property to the city uh, or to have the Tura retain ownership uh, and continue to lease the property and accept proposals for leasing the property after the current lease expires. Now, the city could do that as well. Continue to lease the property if it was under its ownership. But putting it over to the city provides for somewhat less flexibility if someone comes in with a development proposal. Uh, the, the, the urban renewal agency has a, a greater ability to negotiate the value of the property under a development agreement. Whereas the city, uh, does not have that same level of flexibility. So if the thinking is, yeah, in the future, we want to move towards privatizing this parcel, um, conveying it to someone in the private sector under a development agreement, it should really stay in the ownership of Tura. But if it, it's going to be a longer term public ownership, where you have tenants who lease the property with no development incentive, then the city ownership is probably the better choice. Cause it's, uh, you know, ultimately, at, at some point, Tura is going to close out. Um, so that's, um, those are the, uh, those are the alternatives that I presented.
So I'm hearing you say that it's important for us to start thinking about whether or not we want to develop that property or offer it up for development.
Yeah.
Um, or whether or not, uh, it should just be conveyed to the city for long-term leasing.
Right. So for example, even though it's a very small parcel and it's pretty much fully developed, uh, you could do a, a development agreement for, with the cafe owner. Uh, where you provide that it's going to be reoccupied as a cafe, which I think would be consistent with the downtown plan. Uh, and convey the property to them at less than market value to incentivize them to rehab the property for that purpose. But if you're not thinking about trying to move it back into commercial use and retaining it just as a revenue source from the city, then I really don't think you have to do anything. Or possibly just move it to city.
Any questions or comments? Is the city interested in making a recommendation? Um, or are, uh, I, either, either the city or urban renewal? I, are either of the agencies interested in a recommend, making a recommendation to the board?
Yeah, the, I think the city and tourist staff, uh, would recommend retaining ownership of the property and, and using it as a revenue generator. Uh, for the city, the city needs, um, revenue going forward. And one way to do that is to uh, not sell your properties, but utilize them as a revenue source. So in that situation, you could lease it to the cafe owner or to Rogue Action Center uh, at the new rate. In that, and then that becomes a revenue source, but you can't offer the urban renewal incentive to the private that they would have, they would have to pay for the full rate in doing the, uh, conversion, which they may be willing to do.
I wonder if, I, I don't think the urban renewal is going to go away very soon. We still have work to do and we have a grant to deal with, um, a large grant to deal with. So I think we have some life left. And I wonder, I know that you're, you started to talk about, um, kind of the, the sort of the budget reconstruction that you want to work on in twenty twenty-five. Um, so maybe we don't really talk about this until we start to look at that structure more and, and look at, um, maybe we put this on hold until that process begins.
But you've got a lease renewal coming up in the
Oh, that's what's triggering this conversation, right? But can we ju-, can we renew it for a, a brief period of time?
Could do that. Uh, y- and you also have those active requests from the cafe owner who is seeking to get in the door, literally, on this property, so, um.
But by putting on hold, what we could say is we're not putting it on the market for this until, until we've had this study that we're going to, that you want to work on. Um, we, we can just say that we're not doing that at this time.
Right.
That's one option as well, right? And then that process might flesh out the whole where the city could make a formal proposal in that process as well.
Right. Okay.
As a potential option, but I mean, there's o- other options on the table. So I don't, I just wanted to add that third perspective. Uh, member buyers?
I mean, I, you were speaking to something that I was thinking about in that I would be curious how, I mean, we already received a breakdown for maintenance of the, um, the community center, which I know is not a leased building, but there's also time and staff, uh, I'm, and resources spent on the maintenance of the depot. And so I would be curious where the break-even point is for us with holding on to that property. Um, if it's a similar agreement like with the depot where all exterior repairs are done by the city and there are specific types of maintenance that are, um, on, under city per view to.
Yeah, we even, we even replace door handles.
Yeah. Historic ones. Um, I'd be curious, you know, like where is the break-even point for us with that?
So more questions, I can come back with that down the road.
Yeah, I, I feel like as part of a larger, um, as part of the larger project that you want to work on in twenty twenty-five. You know, the, the, I think you've talked about, you know, evaluating the department costs and all of that stuff, right? Oh, sorry, member Colay?
Very good. Um, it might have said in your report, or you might have said it, but does Rogue Action Center want to stay in that space for some amount of time? And will, and would they be open to the new nonprofit rate?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay, um, are there any other questions? So, yep, I look forward to this being part of a larger discussion then. Is that where, where we're landing on this? I don't. Does anybody see it differently? All right, very good. Thank you.
Last one is, uh, that little piece of property that is owned by Tura that's really a part of the street right of way. Converted from a parcel that is a tax parcel to just a part of the street right of way that the city maintains.
Is that the pollinator garden that's right next to the liquor store?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the peace pole is also there.
Yeah, the peace poles there, yeah. Do you want to know if you, we think you should convey it to the city right now, or do you want to make that part of the larger?
Uh, it seems, seems like we could just do that. I mean, it, it's not a not really much of a revenue issue. The city's already maintaining it.
Um, I hope that urban renewal is reimbursing the city for maintaining it because we still own it.
Not, not sure about that.
It'd be worth looking at and maybe, um, you know, getting reimbursed for the work that's being done. That is part of the agreement. There's a, there's an IGA between the city and the and the agency. Um, member Colay?
Just one question on, on that is, um, for those that require a public hearing for conveying these properties, are those all going to be separate public hearings for each individual issue? Or would that just be when we revisit this discussion if we were to convey or?
Each one.
Okay.
I think because there's an IGA between urban renewal agency and the city, um, that includes maintenance, um, I feel like conveying it now until you've had an opportunity to see how that's going to impact the city budget is premature. And in the meantime, if it, the city's maintaining it, they should continue to maintain it, but we should be looking at that IGA for reimbursement.
Okay.
I mean, that's not going to change anything at this point in time and, 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 um, conveying it now would just would just not change anything except except actually make the cost burden the cities, where right now the cost burden is actually urban renewals.
Yeah, and it changes it from a legal parcel to a right of
Is that right of way needed for anything right now?
No. No, but, you know, it's a legal parcel, so, um, it's just an odd.
Is the city recommending for it to happen now so that you can just clean things up or?
Yeah, it's just, it's just an odd situation. I'd like to clean up.
Would you like, okay, well, I, I think that's important for us to all know is that the city is recommending that to be, to happen now.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, member buyers?
I'm fine with making a motion.
Yep.
All right. I move to initiate the process of conveying the remnant parcel under these main streets to the city as a public right of way.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, uh, to convey the parcel to the city, uh, for pub, for a public right of way. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, done deal. I still think that this, the city should be reimbursed for maintenance for a period of time. I still believe that. Uh, yeah, member Greta? Yes.
If I'm, if I'm spending
You still count towards the forum? Yeah, vote, right.
That's right.
Yeah. That's a good question. All right. So item four point two is the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four. It is six fifty-six. Maybe we can make this a Maybe we can make this a four-minute project.
Right. So you've seen this before, but not in a resolution form. So the, uh, the, both the city council and Tura month or so ago, uh, took action to approve the new rate schedule at a meeting, but we needed to come back and adopt it formally by resolution. So that's supposed to be for you, is that, uh, the rate schedule for um, city and Tura-owned properties, uh, is the same. Uh, and it's, it's, it's shown in the resolution where nonprofits being seventy-five percent of the market value, the market rate, which comes out to a dollar ten a square foot. Uh, and that the policy for leasing non-office space uh, would be at a rate determined on a case-by-case basis. So same policy in both resolutions, we just changed the name.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Member buyers?
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three dash R, a resolution that establishes lease rates for the talent urban renewal agency properties.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero three, zero R, a resolution establishing rental rents, uh, on talent urban renewal agency-owned properties. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We'll call mayor.
Oh, uh, I don't think we need to do that.
Cool.
No.
Yeah.
Sorry. I appreciate the heads up. So, uh, motion passes. Um, so the next item is, uh, I, I am from the chair. Are there any items from the chair? No, there isn't. Uh, written communications, none. Uh, so this meeting is adjourned at six, uh,
items, just super quickly, um, I'm hoping that it would be okay for future agendas if we can add additions and corrections to the agenda just like the council agenda has as item number two for Tura.
To, I don't think we have any, uh, I don't think we have any order of business in our bylaws. So maybe what we should propose is, uh, adding order of business to our bylaws to include number two additions and.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, so we would get a proposed order of business to add to our bylaws and we can vote on it then.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's not a code one. Um, so don't, uh,
It's easy enough to accommodate.
Yeah, okay. Um, all right, uh, so if there's nothing further, we will adjourn this meeting at six fifty-nine and I will open the council meeting in one minute.